Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting on Wednesday, May 6, 2015. Can I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith. Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
Please, all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of April 15?
So moved.
Motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Public speak time. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address. No, we'll call you later. Okay, not singing in, we can move on. Communications, let the board officials and correspondents, Councilor Rist.
We have received a request from the Veterans Council, actually an invitation for all of the councilors to march in the Veterans Day Parade, which will take-
Memorial.
I'm sorry, Memorial Day Parade, which will take place on Monday, May 25th. Parade participants will assemble at Clark Street staging area at 10:00 a.m. So if you're planning to participate in the parade, please call John O'Connor, Veterans Agent. And I have the phone number if you need it, or you can get it from the clerk. So they are inviting all councilors to march in the parade. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to standing committees, Rules, Government Relations, Councilor Rist.
Yes, the Rules Committee will meet on Thursday, May 14th at 5:30 in Room 1, where we'll take up at least the three administrative code requests. And I would like to make a motion under New Business to move the Administrative Code Request 15-3 to combine the Fair Housing Committee and Housing Partnership Committee. That request two rules for review.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
A motion, a second, to move, under New Business, the new request for Administrative Code 15-3, combine Fair Housing Committee and Housing Partnership to Rules and Regulations. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And lastly, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing, as all these administrative code requests require public hearings. And that public hearing request will be for May 20th, our next meeting, at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to set public hearings for the three administrative code requests that are presently in Rules and Regulation for May 20th, 6:15. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And that concludes.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Councilor Hagan.
Yes, in Finance, we have three public hearings tonight in Finance, starting at 6:15. They're all interdepartmental transfers. There is some new business. The one, the two items on our agenda is our next meeting is going to be May 14th, which is actually Thursday at 6:00 p.m., in which time we're going to start taking up the FY16 budget. Thursday, we hope to take up Sections 2 on Public Safety, Sections 1 on General Government, Sections 8 on Employee Benefits, and Section 9 on CPA. Hopefully, that's going to be a long, kind of a long night, but we're trying to get them all in so that the department heads can only make one night of the three meetings. So we're going to try it this year. It's a little different than our past schedule. The other, only other item that, the only other two items is some, we have two supplemental appropriations, one of $22,000 for a portable water clarinator and $200,000 to transfer from free cash to general stabilization. And in the form of a motion, I'd like to set both of those items for a public hearing at the May 20th meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to set public hearing on May 20th for the two supplemental appropriations of $22,000 and $200,000. Additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And the only other agenda item that we have is the request for the Section 260, Chapter 165. What I'm going to do is, and I'll explain it, I'm going to keep this in committee one more. We will have to deal with it at our next City Council meeting, but I'll keep it in committee one more time, Subcommittee, for a couple of reasons. One, Councilor Kuzinski wasn't able to attend the last Subcommittee meeting. I think it's fair he should weigh in again. And also, Councilor Derby and I know Tamara Smith were, Councilor Smith, kind of had wanted to, but it's because of scheduling, they were running an ordinance committee at the same time. So again, that's the night of the budget, so if any of the councilors come, I certainly would entertain any of their comments before we get into the budget, just as long as we can be as brief as possible. And also, I received the call from the Chair of the School Committee, who also wants to weigh in on it. So I did provide the information to the School Committee Chair, who wanted to weigh in and will said would do so by next Thursday. And finally, even the Mayor said that she felt it was something she would probably like to be here when we discuss. So for that reason, I'll move that over to one more meeting. And I believe that's-
Finance for right now? Move New Business?
Sure. I got my business. I have three items of new business. The first is a supplemental appropriation dated April 29th, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $34,000, and is to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings in that amount, and appropriated to Sewer Overtime in the amount of $8,000, Wastewater Treatment Overtime in the amount of $10,000, and Water Overtime in the amount of $16,000. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for unanticipated overtime costs due to the severity of this past winter. I'll make a motion at the end of all three appropriations. My second, first reading, is a supplemental appropriation dated April 29th, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $19,810.44, and it would be appropriated from free cash in the amount of that, the same amount of $19,810.44, and appropriated to Fire Department Sick Leave Incentive. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a sick leave buyback for an unanticipated retirement. And the final supplemental appropriation, first reading, is also dated April 29th, 2015, and the request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $16,000 appropriated from free cash in that amount, $16,000, and appropriated to Fire Department Capital SCBA Bottles. And the amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. I would make in the form of motion that all three of those supplemental appropriations be moved to Finance for review.
That's it.
Okay, motion, a second, to move those just previously read supplemental appropriations to Finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. And I believe that's it for Finance. Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Councilor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have ongoing with our request for street acceptance, with Paul Street Exception, Extension. We're getting some conflicting information about that street light, so I'm still trying to backtrack that. And we have a continued review of the street acceptance protocol. The joint poll location request on Williston is at a public hearing this evening. And next week, when we have our meeting, will be a request to amend the traffic rules and orders. I'm sorry, I don't have a date for that meeting right now, but with all the Finance Committee meetings, Councilor Hayes, it gets out right now. It's a little tricky squeezing that in, so we will do our best. This concludes.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Councilor Winnie.
Yes, thank you. We met tonight at 5:00. We opened. We invited the four mayoral appointments to our meeting, starting at 5:15. We started with a letter that Mr. Tom Brown had sent us for his appointment to the EDIC, saying that he could not make our appointments meeting. I read the letter that he sent us, I put it in the record, so it will be in the minutes, and it's also on the air, as I read it into the, when the camera was running. It was voted 2 to 0 that we appoint Tom Brown to the EDIC Industrial Committee. We then had Mr. Clay Crowe come in, and we asked him why he wanted to be on the EDIC, and we had a few questions for him. We ended up making the motion and voting 2 to 0 to appoint Mr. Crowe to the EDIC for the year and a half term that is left in that appointment, for the EDIC appointment. And then we also asked Carol Abby Smith to come. She didn't make our meeting, but we did look at her letter that she sent us with her application for the appointment, and we voted 2 to 0 to go ahead and point her to that committee. So right now, I will make the motion to accept Carol Abby Smith to Development Industrial Committee and Tom Brown to Development Industrial Committee, in the form of a motion with their term of expiration of 12/31/2017.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for, to approve the appointment of Carol Abby Smith and Tom Brown Development Industrial Committee. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
I will make the motion that we appoint Clay Crowe to Development Industrial Committee with his term of expiration of December 31st, 2016.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for the appointment of Clay Crowe Development Industrial Committee for December 31st, 2016. Any additional comments, question, Councilor Hayes?
There was a lot of discussion about putting Mr. Crowe on the Board because of his past relationship with David Gardner, who already sits on the Board, and the Mayor's really looking forward to having this Board become more vibrant and moving forward. And it just is a little concerning that these are two individuals that have had a long history of a contentious relationship, both sitting on the same Board at the same time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just quickly comment, I came in at the very end of the Subcommittee hearing on Mr. Crowe, and I just go back to the, kind of the sign thing, which I think that might have been between Mr. Crowe and Mr. Gardner, and I think that was a while ago. And I know Mr. Gardner, when he went before the EDIC, he was given a one-year term, and this is just a little over a one-year term, so again, I guess I would like to see that, you know, hopefully that things can kind of work together, and hopefully things have changed.
Okay. Do you have another comment, question?
Yeah, there was also some concern about some correspondence from Mr. Crowe towards former City Councilors and other people on social media and emails, and we were assured that that kind of harassing correspondence was not going to be happening in the future.
Okay. Any other, Councilor Kuzinski?
I certainly just wanted to comment that I had worked on the Sign Committee with Mr. Crowe and was very pleased with his work on that committee, and that was a long, arduous process, and he stuck through it the whole time, and I enjoyed his participation, certainly I support his continuing, and I'm pleased to have him continue with the city.
And any other comments, question, Councilor Rist?
As I said at the Subcommittee meeting, I don't believe it's a bad thing to have adversarial positions between two people on the same Board. We have some of them on this council, as long as they stay civil, and debates stay civil. And I believe that a lot of lessons were learned prior, in the prior situation with the Sign Ordinance, et cetera, and that I believe in both Mr. Gardner and Mr. Crowe's positions have mellowed a little bit, I hope. And I think that, that moving forward, they both want to do what's right for the city, and they may have different paths to get there, but I think having them on the Board isn't a negative thing. And again, it's for a year and a half, I guess. We can revisit it if situations occur that we didn't, we hope will not.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the appointment.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you. The third appointment is Dennis Lacourse to the Board of Health. Dennis, unfortunately, we had a little bit of miscommunication, so he was, he was not there at 5:15, and he came in as we were ending our meeting to come up here. So the President has, going to set aside some time for Mr. Lacourse to come up and speak at the podium to the rest of the councilors. It was voted 2 to 0 to not appoint Mr. Lacourse to the Board of Health, and then we'll discuss that as to after Mr. Lacourse can come up to the podium, and I will turn this over to the President.
So Mr. Lacourse, if you'd like to come over to the podium, again, so fill in the council, there was a miscommunication as far as time, and usually the Subcommittee is where questions are answered, but so-
Don't worry, just keep going.
Yeah, so I will try to keep him short, but obviously, you know, for due process, I'd like to make sure you have a chance to say your reasons why, and people can ask your questions. So I'm just going to start, if you just-
Point of order?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, if anyone is here for the public hearing, I think we ought to ask that question first, so that we can assure ourselves that we're not overrunning without somebody having to be here only for five minutes.
Right, and I think this might be a little more than five minutes. So typically, our public hearings start at 5, at 6:15. This may probably go 10 minutes or so. Is there anyone here that would accept their, upset their schedule to start a little bit later? Okay, not singing in, great, thank you for the point of order. So, Mr. Lacourse, just, I guess, to start off with, before we, the councilors can ask you any questions, if you just want to summarize why you would like to be on the Board of Health, anything you may, want to say that might, for your appointment, I guess.
Good evening. I was approached to get on the Board of Health by the Chairman of the Board, and before I agreed to put my name forth, I met with the Chairman of the Board. I also met with the agent and talked about how she felt about me being on the Board, and her response was she was thrilled. She said it would be great to have somebody on the Board who has knowledge and experience about questions that I bring before the Board, that would be able to help to explain to the rest of the members of the Board precisely what I was talking about. Up until recently, I didn't have any ambition to get on the Board of Health, but honestly, the city spent a great deal of money on training and time over the 14 years that I served as the agent. And I honestly feel that I'd like to be able to give back some of that knowledge that I gained over that 14-year period as a volunteer to the city. I mean, I live here, I have a business here. I've had a business here for 13 years. So if there's a way that I can give back to the city, the knowledge that they helped put in my head, train me for, then I'd like to be able to do that. The Mayor and I met, and we talked at length about it, and she said, "I'm very comfortable about putting you forward. I know who you are. You worked 13 years in that job, and I feel comfortable about putting your name forward to serve on the Board." So I felt comfortable about that, and that's why I agreed to put my name forward. I'll be glad to answer any kind of questions. I don't have any agendas to get on the Board. There's no hidden agendas on my part, but I just think that I have a lot to contribute. I mean, a lot of knowledge and experience that I can give to the Board. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. That's the reason I applied for the position.
So we can start with some questions, then? Does anyone have questions here, Councilor?
I can start. I have, this was the first appointment where I had numerous people get in touch with me, expressing their displeasure with having your name put forward for this particular Board. And the feeling was that, even though you have tremendous knowledge on the nuances in the actual health code itself, that the enforcement and the interpersonal relationship and customer service, frankly, was severely lacking. And if, the other question that I had about it is that the Board of Health oversees that position, and essentially, they are, you know, the boss of the health inspector. And you fill in for the health inspector if she's ill or unavailable, correct?
I could, if the other members requested that I do so.
But you do that currently, and have done it in the past?
Currently, she has asked me to fill in, and I've never had to respond, mainly for the fact that there just hasn't been any situation where they needed the agent to come forward.
Just, the situation just seems to be very uncomfortable, because you know this job intimately, and it put you in a, an overseeing position on, on somebody who's now currently doing the job, and for that reason, I can't support this appointment.
Okay. Any other additional comments, question?
I'll start. So Dennis, I guess I would have to also say, I also received some of those calls, and some of the, maybe you can answer hearsay versus. So there was one client, a citizen complaint about you shutting down a high school bake sale. Do you happen to remember what that might have been related to? Does that ring a bell?
God, I don't know. I mean, the only possibility I can think of is that the Board had voted many years ago to establish for any food event, any event that was serving food to the public, that the permit be issued for the event. And there was an application form explaining what they needed to know before they served food to the public. And all I can think of is, the only reason that I would possibly shut something down is because I was doing my job as a regulation for the city. That can be the only possible reason that I can think of.
Okay. You can answer for me too, again, so clarify for me, the Board of Public Health, you set policy for the public health agent, how, what is your interaction? What is, what is your interaction with the public health agent?
I guess the agent reports to the Board the activities that they've had during their, during their month or two months, or whatever the time period was between the meetings, as to what they're doing, what cases are out there, what housing court cases they may have, what food inspections they've done, what pool inspections they've done. The activities of the agent reports to the Board, and basically, the Board just reviews with that agent what's going on, so they can be informed if one of those citizens comes before the Board and complains about whatever the agent is doing. That's one aspect of it. The Board also oversees if they have some emergency situations having to do with communicable diseases, if there's situations having to do with emergency housing, with having to do with removing an elder, we'll say, from their home because it's not a safe environment. The Board would be the one that would act on that. Having to do with immunizations, I mean, it's a broad range of things that the Board has to act on or vote on on a regular basis to, and the agent generally makes the recommendations based on his or hers experience or knowledge in relation to that particular question. So the Board, and the Board has to follow the same guidelines that the agent does. The Board can't invent rules or make up their own rules. They have to follow the guidelines from the Department of Public Health. So the flexibility of the Board is really limited to what, what the rules are, what the regulations are. And the comment to the thing that you brought forward, the complaints, I had a Chairman, Jack Raymond, who was my Chairman of my Board for probably 10 years and served on a lot of committees, and his comment to me was, "I know you're doing your job when people are complaining. When I don't get complaints, I'm going to wonder if you're doing your job." Because unfortunately for the agent, I've been on that seat. That agent has to always, in the majority of the time, tell people to do things that they don't want to do. And, and they get angry, and they get mad.
Absolutely, and actually my background-
Restaurant owners get upset, you know, landlords get upset.
My background's in, like, restaurant consulting, and I think you do a fine job of enforcing actual code, but there have been requests to other businesses to go above and beyond code, which you just kind of get to decide, and you can then enforce. And I think you go a little bit of extreme with that on people, and it's difficult for business owners, because that's an added expense, and it seems a little bit arbitrary on your side.
Okay, well, I'm a business owner, so I understand.
Any additional questions? Councilor Hayes?
Just, for my own thing, when you were the health agent, the current Board members be, I assume, two others. Are they, were they on the Board when you were serving both?
I believe Dr. Roy, Chairman of the Board, is right there.
They were the same, or those two were both on the Board when you-
One was. The other Board member was not. I've worked with her in the past, but she was not on the Board.
I just, that's, I just kind of know.
And I'm sorry, I'm not sure I got the straight answer on that. Did, or did you not shut down the, the high school bake sale?
I honestly don't remember. I took 14 years, and an awful lot of inspections, and an awful lot of restaurants, and temporary food events.
Is it, for shutting things down, I mean, how often is that something that you would be involved in?
Probably, or as the Board or as the agent?
Well, either, per year, and how often does that occur?
I think in my 14 years, we closed a restaurant twice, and they were for very serious code violations, in 14 years. That wasn't the objective, it never was the objective. The objective was to educate the restaurant owner or the landlord on how to comply with the law, or how best to meet whatever the requirements were. It never was about closing a business.
But you don't remember anything with the high school closed?
No, I really don't.
Hey, what else, Councilor?
Kind of an informational question. In the years that you were the health agent, I imagine there were various changes in the Board that, I would imagine it'd be important to have certain disciplines, a doctor, a nurse, someone else in the health profession, and to me, it would seem important to have a health, a former health agent could very much be a beneficial thing for the community, but could you tell me about the types of disciplines from the health agent perspective when you served?
When I served, we had Kip Heinzey and John Raymond and Nancy Duraco. Nancy Duraco was a nurse. John Raymond was an electrical engineer, and Kip Heinzey was an engineer. They were probably the longest-serving members of the Board, but I also had a physician's assistant, Trish Carey, who's currently a physician assistant, who's appointed by the Mayor, who served on the Board. I worked with her a lot, very closely, and we, I can't think of any, any time that her or John Raymond or Kip Heinzey and I had any kind of conflict. They asked questions, and they made decisions, sometimes against my recommendation. They made decisions based on what they felt was the best for the city. And it was always a pleasure to work with them. I enjoyed working with them a lot. I also, Dr. Roy was my supervisor for a number of years on the Board, and I'm sure he'll tell you that they always made their decisions based on what was there.
Councilor?
No, I would actually like to hear from the present Board members and what their feeling is about the mix. My biggest concern is, you know, having a past health inspector now in the driving seat, per se, on the Board overseeing the, the new health inspector, and those were my biggest concerns, as, as I think, Councilor Rist, and I don't want to talk for him, but those were my really biggest concerns on, on this appointment, but I would love to hear from-
Do you mind, just, of course, Dr. Roy, would you be willing, just to, for the council, just?
Sure.
You have a-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess, I guess the question is, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Dr. Norman Roy, Chairman of the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. And just obviously, because we have this appointment coming up, is there any kind of comment you would like made concerning his appointment to the Board?
Okay. One is, I do feel that you're not going to find someone with more qualifications being a former health agent. Now, one, I didn't hear the full spectrum of the discussion here, because I was at the office, and I just got out and came here, so appreciate you giving me a little time here, okay? It's true, first of all, as a health agent, you're never going to be 100% the favorable person, whoever that is. Anybody who comes to see us before the Board, they don't want to be there, okay? Most of it is an educational process, and we work to try and get them to understand what's going on. So if there were situations that happened, you know, for example, with a prior agent, like Dennis had some situations, and I heard some questions, and this is where I came in, so I do apologize if I'm not taking it the right way, but I'm taking it my way from my perspective, is, do you remember ever doing this? Do you remember closing this? Do you remember having a problem with this business, or this business had a problem with you? Well, that may have been when he was an agent, he's no longer an agent, and if he sits on the Board, he's not the agent, okay? So anything of the past experiences are over. As far as having anything, as far as being in the driver's seat, he's not, okay? Now, some of you may say, "Oh, I am." No, I'm not. There's three people, and there's three Board members. Each of us has an equal say. Are we always going to agree? I'm going to tell you right now, absolutely not. Okay? But to have- But to have the board now being a physician, a nurse, and having a former agent, you can't find a more qualified board. If there's any questions over interpretations, we have three different perspectives. As far as, you know, Jackie, we discussed it with Jackie, the former, our agent now, she doesn't have any concerns. There's no problems. I've discussed this, the mayor and I have had discussions. She has no problems. She put Dennis's name forth. I recommend his name go forth. Our former agent recommends his name go forth. Questions, please.
Counselor Riss?
If I understand the procedure, if the health agent in a case makes a recommendation to the board, the business or whoever that agent is making the complaint against, shall we use, say, has the right to appeal to the Board of Health. And you have the right to overturn if it's within the law, if it's within your discretion.
Yes.
So the statement you make that he has no authority or you have no authority is incorrect, in my opinion. You have authority because the board health agent, the health agent has to answer to you or to defend that complaint. And in this case, the actions of the agent have to be defended to you should the complainant come forward to appeal to you.
Correct.
So I don't agree with your statement that you have no, that Dennis should, or you or anybody on the board have no authority. You have authority, you have a lot of authority. Yes, there's three of you, but you have authority. And so I don't think, I'm not going to hide behind the fact that I haven't stated it yet, but I don't agree with this appointment for a lot of reasons and I'll state them further. But one of the things that I am concerned about is that having Mr. Lacourse on, that authority is second guessing the authority of the agent. And I, I don't, I don't like to put that uncomfortable position in place, and I'll explain that more later. But the point I'm trying to make is, I don't agree with your statement that you have no authority, you have plenty of authority.
Okay.
And I, and I, you can, your statement to that concerns me because I know that appeals happen all the time, do they not? I mean, if a complaint is registered, don't they, don't they appeal to you?
They do, and I apologize for maybe not being as clarified or possibly not understanding the clarification of the statement.
Okay.
When I said he has no, or I have no authority, it's meaning the board is a member of three. Each individual by themselves has no authority. One board member is not going to make a decision. It is a vote.
I agree.
Okay? It's just like each one of you, yes, you have authority as a group, but by yourself, you are not the authority.
Okay.
And that is what I was referencing.
Okay.
I guess my question is sort of similar. So Mr. Lacourse may very well have had a way he likes to have things done, how he thinks they should be done. If he felt that the present health inspector was necessarily doing it the way he would like to do that, does, would he have the right to say, "No, it needs to be done this way"? Or is this something that would be a vote of the three of you that we agree that it should be done that way or not?
Okay. Any board, at the Board of Health meeting, any board member, any board member can say anything they want and suggest anything they want, okay? It is up to the board to decide the outcome. So I can go to Jackie right now and say, "Jackie, I don't like the way you're handling this situation." Okay? Board will discuss it. Will they agree with me or not disagree with me? Okay? If Dennis is on the board and he says, "Jackie, I really think this should be done this way." Okay? As a board, let's discuss it. Is she doing the proper procedures? Is she doing the right thing? It's the board that makes the decision. If anything gets out of, out of hand and any board member starts going to the current health agent saying anything, the board, she has the right to come to me, whoever the health agent is, whether it's Jackie or someone else, or whoever the chair is at that point. So if there's any concerns, concerns are brought to the chair, the chair will bring it to the board. And I have not heard any disagreements from the board or the current health agent in this respect, or for this appointment, or from the mayor.
Counselor Hayes?
Well, and, and you did arrive late, but this is the first appointment where I received numerous, "Please defend" against this appointment. And it was from business owners in town. And it wasn't because of the enforcement of the code and it wasn't because you have to make unpopular decisions. It was the way they were treated intrapersonally and strictly a customer service aspect.
Okay.
And having that kind of representation for East Hampton is just not good.
Okay. But first of all, the businesses that had problems, if they had questions, concerns, again, they could have approached the board or approached me. I'm not recollecting any of them at this point. But also, we are not putting forth the appointment for a health agent, putting for a board member. It means the board member is not going to be one going out addressing concerns with businesses. That's my health agent.
I don't need you to agree with me on the feedback that I receive.
Oh, I'm just for any of, I'm just addressing for you or anyone, because if you're saying it and I turn from, there's been other concerns with Counselor Riss here also, is Dennis is not the one going out doing inspections if he's on the board. He's not the agent anymore. We have an agent. My understanding, the agent's doing a good job. I like her. Everyone else seems to also. She's the one out there in the public right now.
I saw Dr., I mean, I saw Counselor Winnie's ducking it first.
Don't want to be.
You just got promoted.
Yeah, no, I don't think so. That's a devotion. I'm sorry, Dr. Roy.
That's, I understand.
With that being said, if, if Jackie's not available or Jackie's out sick or whatever, would you be having Dennis go out and do inspections or whatever?
Yes, we would.
In, in that respect? And, and was that past practice? What did you do before if the health inspector was out?
If Dennis was out, when he was the agent?
Yeah.
We had a list of, of agents that we would call and use it as one or two who would be on there. Lately, what has been happening is when Jackie is no longer available, whether she's on vacation or attending a seminar or conference or something of that sort, she has been, and we have, she's been calling Dennis and Dennis has been following through in her absence.
So could, could we take Dennis off that list as, as a, as a kind of a, you know, an intermediate thing? Take him off the list and go back to your call-in list that you used for the other health agents in the surrounding communities to come in and fill in if Jackie's not available?
This is a decision that, this is a decision that basically the Board of Health would go through. The Board of Health has agreed to have Dennis be the one who Jackie calls in the meantime.
But that was before he was made on the board. What, where, what I think I'm trying to ask is, would the board consider if, if Dennis has made an appointment to the board, would the board consider taking him off that list and then going back to your backup list to have other health inspectors come in so that Mr. Lacourse doesn't have to do that? So I think that there's really, that's where I'm having my issue.
Okay.
The-
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
The controversy and, not so much the controversy, as I think that it might be a conflict of interest, that, that he's sitting on the board, if, if he gets appointed, that he's on the board, and then you're now asking him to go out and do the inspections when you just said he will not be doing the inspections, he will not be going out in the public.
As the core person of Jackie is the one who's doing that.
Correct. But if Jackie's not there, I would still like to sit here and for you to be telling us and making assurances to us that he will not be going out if he's appointed to the board, he will not be going out and doing those inspections as a board member or in her place.
Okay. One of the reasons is where we discussed this as a board is, in discussing the situation with Jackie and that, is right now, when Jackie's not there and Dennis goes out, he is being paid.
Right.
When, if he's on the board, he would not be paid. So it was a financial situation and that consideration. Now, in the respect that this initial response was a board discussion and a board decision as far as when Jackie's not there as Dennis is there, I don't have the right to say that right now. Can I say we will bring that up at a meeting and discuss that? I have no problem with that. But I'm not going to override my board as something that we already discussed and go against it.
Counselor Winnie, do you have a question too?
Actually, I was going to ask, I was going to ask for Counselor Winnie about how the makeup of, fill-in was.
When, when is your next board member meeting, when is your next meeting as a board?
May 11th, Monday? Monday.
So if, if we, Mr. President, if we put this appointment off until our next meeting, which is May 20th, we're still within the realms of the appointment to have the board that's there now go back and come back with us with a vote after they discuss it, that they'll make assurances that if we do make this appointment, that Mr. Lacourse won't be asked to go out to do any inspections?
Yeah, I, I know where you're getting at. My personally, I have a hard time telling the Board of Health how they should do their, their job.
I'm not asking-
No, no, no. But I mean, you're saying, you know, to get, to not have him do that. I'll be the first one to say I was one of the people who voted against his appointment. I am a little more hesitant about that now. I am thinking what we have done with other controversial appointments has given them a shorter period of time and seeing what kind of response we get from the public or if there are any issues. But again, this is just where I'm at. Other counselors can certainly be in other places right now. But I see what you're saying. So I'm sorry, did you want a motion?
No. What I would, what I would ask is that we hold off the appointment until our May 20th meeting and, and ask the Chair of the Board of Health to come back and have them, give them some time to discuss-
Okay, I would like to do that as a, as a vote for the council then. I think I'd like the council to make that decision.
Mr. President, as a point of order, and I'm not really sure what foundation I have for it other than the fact that I don't think that we as a council have the right to tell the Board of Health what to do with regard to who they send out as a substitute agent. We can put it in the minutes that we'd like that, but, and they could vote to get Dennis on and then they're stuck, they need someone to go, "Dennis, go do it." They could do that. We don't have the authority to tell them, "No." Excuse me. We don't have that authority. So I really have a problem with this. My problem with the appointment has always been less about, it is about Mr. Lacourse and his past history of businesses, and I think that's an old wound. I apologize. But I have a problem with the idea of having a former health agent on the board from the point of view of micromanagement of the current agent. And I think that sets up an uncomfortable situation between two extremely knowledgeable people, having to deal with issues in the community regarding very serious matters, and that's health and, and health agent situation. I think it sets up a very bad situation and I am not comfortable with it at all. And it doesn't have anything to do with Mr. Lacourse, it has to do with the notion of having that person there. There is no doubt that having a strong, a person of, of knowledge of all of the health rules and laws is excellent, but I would rather see someone like Dr. Roy and our, the nurse and anybody else on health have that secondary kind of knowledge of the rule to be a board member. I just am very uncomfortable with this. But to go to your position on the 20th, I really think that's, that's putting off, we could wait and, and hear from the board, but I really think that we can't force that. We can't, we can't put that in the, we can put it in the motion, but I think that, I don't think it has a rule of law. I don't think we can do it legally.
Quick question on that. Counselor, please.
Just a quick question and a follow-up. Dr. Roy, if I heard you correctly, I thought you said that currently as a non-board member, Mr. Lacourse is being compensated when he fills in, as anyone on the list would be compensated when they fill in. But as a board member, the community would have the benefit of not having to compensate. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I also want to agree with Counselor Riss, is I like the way you put that because is I will not, you were right, so leave it at that. As far as the, putting the board in a position of trying to have us, tell us what to do or to change something to acquire a board member with the expertise, that is not the best thing to do. And I like the way you worded that, so I do commend you for that and thank you for that. I respectfully disagree as far as having to, you know, a former health agent on the board, as far as the, you know, the rift there, there isn't any that I see. I don't see any problem. The only problem I would see is not having someone with the knowledge and caliber of a former health agent there. I mean, you can't get anyone with a higher qualification. And I think to say, if for any personal reasons, you don't want to vote and accept an appointment that's been made and back by the Board of Health, just because as a former agent, you don't want to do this, or maybe there's some past issues you don't like or whatever, and then put someone maybe on the board down the road who happens to come forth, that there is no one at this point, with no knowledge, no expertise, is doing the city a disservice.
But we're- Wait a minute, Counselor.
I mean, I believe you need to look at the qualifications.
Thank you. We have Quasar Derby.
So I actually have a question for Dr. Roy. It's, so this is a three-member board, correct?
Correct.
And right now, currently, two members sitting.
Correct.
So when you meet next Monday on the 11th, it'll be two members.
Or three.
Or three potentially. Is, is this size of a board, a typical Board of Health size?
It's the size we've had right along.
Three people?
Yes, sir.
But what I'm asking you is, do you know if that's typical with, you know, similar communities our size, having three people?
I can only go with what we have always had since I've been on the board, three. Some I believe may have five.
Okay. Just curious, it seems like a really small.
I know that has five.
Yeah. Seems small to me, having a two-member board if you are absent one member, but that's an aside.
This is why we need, this is why we need the appointment.
Yeah, and I think, you know, from, from my perspective, as Counselor Riss, as you were saying that, I envisioned, you know, what would we be saying if a former city planner was applying to be on the planning board? And I think we would be singing probably a different tune, saying, "Oh, this great experience and, and," you know, so I don't, I don't necessarily, I guess I don't maybe know all of the intricacies of the specific instances of complaints or whatnot, but I don't personally see those qualifications as a negative. And in fact, if it was a different situation or if, you know, as I am, I don't have a horse in the race, I would say, you know, you know, take that example, a former city planner trying to be, again, on the planning board, we would be like, "Hooray." We wouldn't say, "Oh, that's, you're going to try to micromanage the planning board." I don't think. I wouldn't say that. You know, so that, that's just my two cents on that particular piece of the argument.
Okay. Exactly. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I just wanted to add, I've known the current health agent for about 30 years, back in another career, and she is one thoroughly knowledgeable, well-balanced individual who has no problems speaking her mind. And if she had issues, I believe she would stand up for what she believed, and I'm sure, I know Mr. Lacourse, he would stand up for what he believed was the right thing, and the board would make good decisions based on that interaction. I did not hear from Jackie or anyone else on this issue, and I'm in favor of the appointment. And I hope we can move it tonight. We're well over our public hearing.
I know. So I, I guess what I had mentioned before, which I intend on doing, is again, I was one of the people who voted against the appointment. I am going to change my opinion somewhat and do what we have done in other past level of controversial opinions or where there have been public discussions, is just change the appointment to end December, I'm going to make an amendment, a motion for amendment by December 31st, 2016. That, that's what I'm going to do. Anyone else can, I'm going to make that motion, it can pass or fail if we want to, once Counselor Winnie makes her appointment. Did you want to say something? I start Counselor Riss first.
I was going to say 2015. I think that gives us six months.
Six months?
Do it better. But that's what I would like to do because I'm def, I'm still going to vote against it, but if the council feels better about this now, we'll give them six months. But I don't think it's going to heal the wounds that are out there. But I would be happy to support the 15. I would like you to consider the December of 2015 this year, and we can revisit it and actually get some more information on how it's been working.
Counselor Hayes?
I'm not supporting this position. And I'd also like to see the vote moved to the next city council meeting because I think people from the public need to be here. I mean, the response that I got was immediate, more so than anything else. I mean, over, over 10 business owners in town were like, "This is a terrible appointment to make." And, and if we- And if we don't have their voice at a public hearing, I think we're doing them a great disservice. We're only hearing from the Chair, saying that the mayor says it's a good idea, and Jackie says it's a good idea. We have to listen to the people of East Hampton and the business owners of East Hampton.
Okay, so now I'll call you Counselor. Dr. Roy.
You get a promotion.
Never know.
Dr. Roy, did you just have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. My understanding is that people from the businesses who are, you know, making the voices being known, I believe those are businesses who have had problems with Dennis?
You're speaking.
Are they, are they businesses who have problems with Dennis when he was the agent?
You're just speaking, please continue.
Okay, what I'm saying is if they are businesses that are having problems with the appointment of Dennis to the Board of Health, and they had problems with him as a health agent, those are apples and oranges. Maybe they have that bitter taste, and they're just saying, well, he made me do this, he made me follow this regulation, he made me do what the law states to do. I'm going to get even, I don't want him there. I don't know, is that a possibility? How many of the people voicing the businesses that are voicing opinions negative to this appointment are businesses that are all the same, boy, Dennis was the best thing around? I believe you're looking at more the negatives. The appointment, if this appointment to the Board of Health will be for the betterment of the Board of Health and be betterment for the city of East Hampton, you have to make that decision and put past things past, if there's any past. But he's, again, you know, look at what is for the best. And again, I do not feel is putting this off to another meeting is going to make a difference. You know, because if you're going to have people who want to come and complain, have people who come and support. You know, and I don't think that is, this is not going to be, should not be that kind of a situation, in this kind of a case. You're looking at qualifications of a candidate for a position on my board.
Okay. Counselor Reston?
I believe that I would like to request the Chair of the Committee postpone this vote until the 20th, at which time we would open public speak time again with a vote of the council, so that it's under our rules, during the appointments committee discussion on this appointment, so that anyone who else would like to speak to it pro or con can do so. Would the Chair agree to that? I'm asking if she would.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we don't have to make a motion.
If it is, if it is, if it is the city council, councilor's wishes that we review this on May 20th, I'll be more than happy to make that as, that we put this off till May 20th, so that we can give the public the opportunity to, to come and look at this and, and voice their opinion, yea or nay. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. President, we don't have to have a motion to do so.
No.
Unless councilors want a vote, then any counselor can make a motion to ask for a vote this evening from the point of order, but we don't have to have a motion.
No, we don't have to have a motion.
It's up to the Chair to bring it forward or not.
If it's the consensus of the, of the councilors that we do this, then I'll be more than happy to do that.
Point of order?
I thought you had made a motion to extend, to limit to December 16th.
I had said I intended to.
December 16th. Well, you intended to.
I intended to. If the, he was going to amend.
Just wanted to clarify that, and then we had a discussion about amending that, and I was going to second your amendment.
What I would like to do, though, is I would see what the council feels here. Is there, someone might to make a motion to postpone this vote till May 20th?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Is there a second for that? Okay. All those in favor?
Could we have a discussion on this?
Okay, discussion, I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you're right, there should be discussion.
Just would love to hear more about why we would make a huge difference on the 20th versus now.
Because I feel, I'm making the motion because I feel like we're getting a little bit railroaded by the Board of Health right now, and they're not taking the concerns of the constituents very seriously. That was very dismissive, what you just said. So I think it would help if we actually had people who had their legitimate reasons why they feel this is an inappropriate appointment to the Board of Health. Because clearly me saying, I've heard from numerous people that this is an inappropriate appointment to the Board of Health, is not flying, so.
I mean, I, I will admit here, I've kind of, you know, I think Dr. Roy has made his point, that this is, we are not appointing a public health agent, so that if Mr. LaCourse had some issues rightfully or wrongfully dealing with the public, that is not the position we are voting for. We are voting for him technically to, for his expertise. I don't think there's been a motion yet.
Yeah.
Oh, there, yeah, this is a discussion, okay, I'm sorry. So there is, yeah, but there's discussion. Okay, so you're right. So let us just get to the point here. So we are voting whether or not we want to take this vote on May 20th. So all those in favor?
Aye. More discussion?
More discussion, please. I would just like to say that I would be in favor of continuing it till May 20th. And again, I have no problem with Mr. LaCourse's qualifications. I said, I'm still trying to process the hierarchy of the board and how that fits in between the board and the health agent, and I think that would give me time at least. And I think that was our whole purpose when we, when we reviewed the charter and gave ourselves the opportunity to move a appointment to a second meeting. It used to be 30 days. I think that was the whole purpose, that we did it, so that we could take our time and have a second meeting, and I think it would be a wise thing for everyone to, at least in myself, I shouldn't speak for everyone, but it would be very helpful to me to come up with a final decision.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Were there any written letters regarding the appointment?
No.
That came to the committee?
No.
I requested from the personnel agent, there were letters, but due to privacy, we could not access them. I did talk to the Secretary of State Public Records, and they would have been accessible by a official public records complaint or request, because there is question whether or not this was a personnel issue versus a communication from the city, but obviously the time period to fill are, you know, I had the wrong term. A records request would have well exceeded our time. So there were, there are letters, I don't know if they're pro or con, but there are letters considering performance as the agent, not as a board member. But they were not accessible because they are protected as his personnel record unless we file a request.
The complaints that I got, they were like, if it comes to it, because it is a small town, and they're afraid of being targeted or backlash if it doesn't go one way or the other, but if they came down to it, yes, they were willing to go on the record.
Okay, so again, we have a motion, a second. Ask, the simple question is, we want to postpone this vote to May 20th. Is there any more discussion concerning that specific question? Okay. I'm just, can we do a roll call vote? Or just, let me just, oh, never mind that, okay, in case it's confusing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Really?
Okay. I lost. Okay. So that, so that, a motion passes, so the vote on this appointment will be May 20th. Certainly, Dr. Roy, anyone else, whether you feel strongly in favor or against this position, this will be, appointment, this will be your time to have people, your opportunity to speak toward this. So that has been moved to the 20th, so I believe.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearings, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Public hearings, Counselor Hagan, of course. Hey, it's a little past 6:15.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess I would ask, does the Chair make another note, just to note the time and note that we did make the announcement again, if someone's watching, they tune into this point, point of the.
Like what?
If you could make an announcement that we had announced to the public who were here at 6:15, that there would be a delay. Because we advertised 6:15 at the time, and now it's 7 o'clock.
I did mention to the public who was here, right?
So anyone watching now should, I think it would be helpful if you clarified.
Yes, anyone who was here for the public hearings, now, we, I apologize for the delay, it became longer than I expected, so we will continue.
And there was no one here that objected at that.
Okay, so Counselor Hagan.
Sorry.
Our first public hearing tonight, and I'll do a second reading, it's an interdepartmental transfer, it's dated March 24th, 2015. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is $6,000, and it's to be transferred from the City Attorney Professional Services in the amount of $4,000, to Reserve Fund in the amount of $2,000, and transferred to the Assessor's Professional Service in that amount, $6,000. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for an unanticipated expenditure in professional services for the Assessor's Department. This was brought in and passed favorably by our committee. This is a property, an appeal of an assessment or a tax assessment on a property on O'Neal Street, and because of the value of the property, it is a matter that has to be heard in the Boston, Boston courts, it can't be heard in the North Hampton or Springfield courts. So the city has to hire an appraisal firm to defend our position in this, and also to pay for the assessor to travel to Boston for these hearings, and that's what really is the matter that needs to be covered by this. Again, it's something that I think we obviously have to follow up if we're going to appeal or defend our decision against this appeal. Again, I know, as you could see, and she said that she wasn't here tonight, the mayor is not here, but the mayor certainly felt the need for this, and certainly I think the board supported it.
Is anyone, like, Jane, you don't want to speak to this? Is anyone else from the public? No, okay, so continue, Counselor.
Unless there's questions for the councilors, I'll make a motion. Hearing on, I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the amount of $6,000 and have it transferred from City Attorney to an amount of $4,000, Reserve Fund in the amount of $2,000, and transferred to the Assessor's Professional Services for the unanticipated expenditure in professional services in the Assessor's Department.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $6,000 from City Attorney Professional Service to Assessor Professional Service. Additional discussion?
Just wanted to say that, you know, being in the real estate business, it's important to have an appraisal of the property, that you go for the hearing and have that appraisal in hand, so.
Any more comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Our second public hearing tonight, again, is another interdepartmental transfer. This one is also dated March 24th. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested is $11,000 and be transferred from the Reserve Fund in that amount, $11,000, and transferred to the Building Inspector's part-time salary. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to fund an unanticipated personnel expenditure for inspection coverage. What this involves, and I, under the new HIPAA laws, I can't be too specific, but there is a need for inspections being done by a couple of, right, a couple of, of our assistant inspectors, and it's just, it requires additional money to cover that, is, and I guess unless there's other questions, I can go into it a little further, or that's one thing Jane could probably talk about, how much information we can give out.
Okay.
What is it?
It's $11,000 to fund inspections, building inspections. We have to hire temporary inspectors to go out and do the inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hagan, is this due to applications or?
If someone were not to be able to be present because they couldn't be there for one reason or another, the services would have to be provided by someone else.
Right.
And the person can't be present.
But it's not, I mean.
And it's something that is acknowledged and approved.
And it's something not under the control of that, of the person that's out. I mean, it's not something that.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Jane, if you might, just come at the podium and just state your position.
I think you said HIPAA.
Right.
Could you explain what HIPAA is?
We all know what HIPAA is.
Well, someone out there may not have heard of it.
Come on.
Confidentiality, or medical, depending on the area.
So can you give us an example or two of how it might?
Basically, basically, you can't provide any personal information to the public. That's why, like, the personnel files are confidential. When you go to your doctors, they sign the HIPAA that they can't release any of your record, you sign a HIPAA policy.
So generally, medical, medical, something, something medical would be.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions for personnel? Okay, thank you.
And just as a final thing, this again was approved by the committee, and within the documentation, it does state the reason that the person is out. While it won't go to the public, it is available to the councilors.
Do I make a, was there a second on that? I can't remember if.
I didn't make a.
Okay.
But, oh, go ahead. We were in discussion, that's all.
Okay.
If there's no further questions by the councilors, I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approved the following appropriation of $11,000 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund and transferred to Building Inspection Part-Time Salary in the amount of $11,000 to fund an unanticipated personnel expenditure for inspection coverage.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $11,000 from Reserve Fund to Building Inspector for part-time coverage. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Our final, at least from finance, our final public hearing tonight is another interdepartmental transfer, also dated March 24th, 2015. And request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, $23,000. It is to be transferred from the Reserve Fund in that amount, $23,000, and transferred to Streetlights Energy in the amount of $17,000, and Streetlights Professional Services in the amount of $6,000. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to fund unanticipated expenditures in the streetlight budget. Again, this was approved unanimously by the Finance Committee, and the breakdown, the $17,000 is, and again, if the mayor was here, she would explain it probably a little more eloquently than myself, but we were locked in at a particular rate, on our electric rates. This is a new rate that's come up, it is only around nine cents, which is still, if anyone reads their own electric bill, is still a reasonable rate that the city's getting, but it is going to add an increased cost, as everyone knows that got electric bills over the last few months. So that's, the $17,000 is for our increase in energy costs from the electric company. The $6,000 is, and I know the mayor has spoke a couple of times in the past of going back and trying to do deferred maintenance on a lot of the streetlights, especially in where they're buried underground that are somewhat expensive, and she's been trying to catch up, we had dropped behind for the last couple of years of getting lights back on in certain areas, and this is just addition to catch up on our maintenance. But again, some of the ones, especially, I know, in the developments that are underground are somewhat expensive to, and have to hire an outside contractor for them. So those are the two, the difference in the streetlight energy and the streetlight professional services.
And I'll just ask for the record, no one here from the public? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the following interdepartmental transfer of $23,000 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund and transferred to the two following accounts, Streetlights Energy in the amount of $17,000, and Streetlights Professional Service in the amount of $6,000, for a total of $23,000, in that it be used for an unanticipated expenditure in the streetlight budget.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the $23,000 interdepartmental transfer from the Reserve Fund to the streetlight budget. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. That concludes your part, I believe. All right, Counselor Hayes.
So we are talking about the, we are holding a public hearing on the jointly-owned telephone pole that was outside of our window. We've actually already did an emergency meeting and made the changes and moved it, so we're holding a public hearing today to see if there are any feedback from the public that would make us want to take it down. You stop. Does anybody need a refresher on why we're doing this?
Can I ask a question?
Pardon? You may ask a question.
I'm curious, I had to leave at the last meeting. Does the city engineer have anything to say about this? As I know, we didn't have an opportunity.
None.
The council voted your request down.
Oh, I understand that, but I was wondering if he made any comment at all.
No, we, we looked at whether or not Jim Gracia, the city engineer, had looked at other, like, structural issues with pole placement, and he doesn't.
So he didn't, he did comment on it, then?
He did not. He did not.
No, he didn't? Oh, he doesn't?
Not, not typical. So we voted down the request.
My mistake, I apologize to the council, I thought he would have something to say.
We, we just moved happily along, Counselor Rist. Um, so seeing as there's no questions, I would move that the city council approve the placement of one jointly owned pole number T dot one S slash E dot ninety-three dash one S, on the northwesterly side of Williston Avenue, at a point approximately seventy-eight feet southwesterly from the center line of Pacon Avenue, to provide lateral support to pole T dot one slash E dot one ninety-three dash one, located on the southeasterly side of Williston Avenue, and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current.
Second. Okay, well, motion, a second, for petition of the, uh, support pole that was just described very detailed. Any additional comments or questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. And I believe we have city ordinance amendment, Counselor Derby.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this was a proposal to amend, uh, chapter seven, sections, uh, seven dash seventeen A, which is Exhibit A of the Classification of Pay Plan. Um, and basically, what the concern was, was there was quite a lot of overlap, um, in different positions, the, and, and that overlap made things more specific than they needed to be, so it didn't give the mayor's office, uh, latitude to, if they needed to just hire an assistant to be able to do that. Um, and so, what they proposed is a cleaned up version of the, um, Classification of Pay Plan, Exhibit A, um, which you should all have in your packet. Um, and I'll let you, if you wanna say anything more about it, you're most welcome to.
Yes. Same straight here.
We, the purpose was twofold, one, to eliminate duplication. For example, the old list had approximately twelve principal clerks. It was principal clerk hyphen Health Department, principal clerk hyphen DPW. We create, we eliminated them, creating one principal clerk, and then the job descriptions will remain the same. They will still be principal clerk hyphen DPW. We also wanted to add in, at each pay grade, a general clerical of some sort, whether it be receptionist, or, uh, I think we put in a clerk, I think we put in, um, a couple basics down low, where we didn't have them before, so that in the future, as technology changes, we may not need a high level in the clerical position. It'll give the managers, when jobs open, the opportunity to place a different level job in that position. It's not to change anybody's job now, it's not to eliminate any jobs now, it's just to give future, um, choices when we do have an opening.
Any questions for the personnel director?
Just, uh, just looking at the list here, Jane, um, this doesn't involve any expenditure of additional money, it's just a, a naming of titles, right? I mean, no titles necessarily.
The only title that there is potentially a change is the on-call dispatcher. That was not a title before, and it just had a pay assigned to it. Now it has a, a pay grade.
Okay.
So there's only, I believe, two, and that would be the only one that could potentially be affected now. They're used very rarely, it's, they're, we're creating the true on-call dispatcher. We're trying to establish a pool of dispatchers so that we eliminate some of the overtime need in dispatch for vacations and callouts. Um, and at the rate it was at, um, they'd come get trained by our department, and then they're gone, so by putting in a position with a, a more competitive rate, we think we're gonna be able to solve some of the overtime problems with dispatch.
Any other questions for, okay, thank you. Anything more, Counselor Derby, do you wanna make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to move that the city council amend the city ordinances, chapter seven, Classification of Pay Plan, section seven dash seventeen A, Exhibit A, Classification of Employees, by substituting the existing Exhibit A effective October first, two thousand and seven, and subsequently amend with the proposed Exhibit A dated May sixth, two thousand and fifteen, as distributed for this meeting.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to accept the, the new May sixth proposed Classification of Pay Plan, Exhibit A. Any additional questions or comments on that? Not being seen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Oh, it was, uh.
Adjutant motion, opposed, public hearings.
So move.
So move, opposed, public hearings.
So, second.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Same, motion passes. Counselor Winnie, had you finished appointment?
No, I did not. Uh, we have fourteen new appointments, make a motion that they be sent down to Appointment Subcommittee, which will be on May twentieth at five fifteen downstairs.
Second.
A motion, a second, to move the new fourteen appointments to Appointment Subcommittee, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, 'cause I believe I'm on the list.
Oh, okay, one extension. Uh, and, but motion still passes. Um, ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we are going to be meeting again with the planning board on May twelfth, which is Tuesday, uh, at six PM. Uh, with, at that point, we are going to retake up the, um, the discussion about building size caps, uh, with the planning board, and so I just want everybody to know that. Uh, we also, uh, had a, a joint public hearing with the planning board about the service station LED sign ordinance, and we did, uh, get their recommendation, um, which was dated April twenty-eighth, and you should, everybody should have a copy of that. Um, we, they, they voted in favor, three to, three to zero, of, um, putting this forward,